The Falls Church Gateway wants to come on, so I'm going to admit her, I think she already has been.
I did, yeah, I got her.
All right, welcome, Robin.
Hi, guys.
We're good to go, Mayor.
Yes, good evening. Why don't we go ahead and get started tonight? Are we on, are we live yet?
Michael, are we live? Yes, you're live, Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you, Cindy, and thank you, Celeste, and welcome to you all to the Monday, November 16th, 2020 work session of the Falls Church City Council. We appreciate you all being with us this evening. We do have a busy agenda, including some closed session items, and so why don't we go ahead and get started? Madam Clerk, will you read the meeting notice?
Mayor, if you'd like, I can read that since it's a work session. The work session for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, as state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operations during COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of City Council and other boards will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings and on FCC TV. Those channels are Cox 11, RCN 2, and Verizon 35. City Council work sessions are conducted to allow City Council members to discuss upcoming legislation and policy issues. The public is generally not invited to speak. Public comment may be sent to cityclerk@falschurchva.gov. All comments are provided in full to the members of council and will be summarized at the next regular council meeting. And if you'd like, Mayor, I'll go ahead and call roll.
Please, go ahead.
Ms. Connolly.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Ms. Hardy.
Here.
Ms. Chance Hiscott.
Here.
Mr. Lickenhouse.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
And Mayor Tarter.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. And we do, as I said, have a busy agenda. Let's get started with it. Our first item is the Home Child Care Facility State Code update, and I believe Ms. Vincent's going to handle that. Are you on the line, Nancy? Or is that me, Wyatt?
Well, let me make a quick introduction. We are joined tonight by Ripple Patel, who is our contract manager and now the Human Services. And this is his first presentation to the City Council, but he will give a quick briefing on this item, and the request is that it be placed on the agenda for your next regular meeting. Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Wyatt.
My apologies for the share problem I'm having right now, but please proceed.
Thank you, Wyatt. Good evening, everyone. I am here to request City Council to amend.
I think we've lost Mr. Patel's video and sound, or is that just me?
I think it's just sound. I can see him down in the corner there, but I just, I can't hear anything. So I think we've lost audio, Mr. Patel. I don't know if there's anything, whether you're muted or anything else you might be able to do. Now, now you're, yep.
Can anyone hear me?
We can hear you now, yes, go forward.
Oh, perfect. My apologies.
No worries.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I am here to request City Council to amend Chapter 8, Article 6 of the City Code, governing private schools and daycare to bring its standards in line with revised Fairfax County and Commonwealth of Virginia code requirements. Both Commonwealth of Virginia and Fairfax County have adopted their amendments for childcare. The amendments will add requirements for additional out-of-state criminal background checks and sex offender registry searches for any adult who has lived in another state in the preceding five years. The city contracts with the Fairfax County Office for Children heavily regulate family daycare homes in the city. The amendment will bring the city code into conformance with Fairfax County code revision for home childcare facilities, which were adopted to meet state code requirements. At this time, this ordinance will affect three home daycare providers in the city. The Fairfax County Board.
Looks like we lost you again there. I think we lost video as well. It looks like you're freezing up.
Can you hear me now?
We can now, yeah.
My apologies. I'm not sure if I'm having issues with my internet. I'll read the last part again. The city contracts with the Fairfax County Office for Children to cost-effectively regulate family daycare in the city. The amendment will bring the city code into conformance with Fairfax County code revision for home childcare facilities, which were adopted to meet state requirements. At this time, this ordinance will affect three home daycare providers in the city. The Fairfax County Board of Supervisors adopted these changes on October 20th, 2020. And that's all I have for now. If you have any questions, I'm here for that.
Okay, thank you so much, and welcome to here at the Falls Church. That was a great job, your presentation. So just to summarize, this change is basically putting us in conformance with state code and Fairfax County, with which we share this regulatory regime. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, let's open it up to questions or comments. Does anybody have any questions from Mr. Patel? All right, Wyatt, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, just appreciate the good work from staff on this, and the request, Council, is to put this on the agenda for next week, and without any further comment, that is, we will move it forward.
All right, well, we've got two comments, it looked like, that have come in, Vice Mayor Connolly and Ms. Hardy, so we'll go ahead and take those comments.
Letty was first. She can go ahead.
All right, Letty?
Oh, thank you. Sorry. And the raising hand process takes longer virtually than in person. Thank you, Mr. Patel, for the update. Thank you for the work in keeping this updated. In general, I think with COVID and just thinking about the importance of childcare and how important accessible, affordable, and quality childcare is to both, obviously, supporting families and just in general economic development, I'm curious on this related topic, whether staff has a sense of whether we have a shortage in childcare in the city, as well as any cost barriers to making affordable childcare available to more people.
I can answer, answer that question?
Sure.
And as far as, as far as during COVID, I mean, there's, there's a childcare issue just generally right now because of the pandemic. But outside of that, there, I have not had reports of a shortage of childcare in the city. There are, there are cost barriers to some families, but we contract with the Fairfax County Office for Children, and there are supports that are given to some families who, the families who receive certain benefits are given supports for childcare. They're not provided directly by the city, but are provided through our contract with Fairfax County Office for Children.
Got it. So in general, I think I support these updates because they do make sense and they're important, but I think, as I was thinking about regulatory barriers that could be in the way of making more childcare available, I think in a city when we're so small, a lot of people go outside our borders for childcare. They go to Arlington or Fairfax, and so maybe less of a big deal, but something that's always been in the back of my mind is, how can government help make sure that childcare is more affordable and accessible? And I think it sounds like we're doing work along those lines. So I would support these changes, but something I think in general that I want to keep in mind, even in the post-COVID environment. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yes, thanks for that presentation, Mr. Patel. I'm just curious, how many facilities this applies to? How many private schools, special schools, home childcare facilities do we have in the city of Falls Church?
As far as home daycare providers concerned, we only have three providers in the city.
Three that have registered. Can we assume there are others that are not registered, that care for smaller amounts?
See, and I can answer this as well. We really have no way of knowing how many home daycare providers there are that, that are not, not permitted to operate in the city. I think that you are probably making a correct assumption that there are others that are, that are not, but we have three that are properly permitted to operate in the city. The larger, when we talk about actually daycare centers, those are licensed by the Commonwealth. So this particular amendment does, does apply to these, to these three home daycare centers.
Have we ever done any sort of PR communications to the community to say, when you're looking for a childcare center, look for one that is approved in the city? I know people make tons, lots of choices when they are looking for someone to take care of their children. This could be something that you assume is there, and it isn't. Do you ever, do you put anything out like that?
It has, we did, we did that several years ago when, when a question came out around nanny sharing and how to go about that. And so, gosh, that's probably been, I don't know, seven, eight years ago since, since we did a campaign that talked about permitting. So as far as, as far as directly from the city of Falls Church. So it probably is a good time to do that again. I know that the Office for Children does have, does have information. They have information on their website. They, they do put out information generally to the Fairfax Falls Church community. But it, but it would be good to stress that again, directly from Falls Church.
Or even just to provide a little sticker or something they can put on their advertising or their website that says licensed or approved, or whatever the proper verbiage is.
They do have a permit that, that Mr. Patel issues to the home care centers, and they, they do display that permit.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anything else, or should we move on to the next item? All right, let's move on to item B, which is amendment to the S.E. entitlement uses. And Mr. Shields, who's going to be handling this?
Mayor, we'll have, I think, these two items we can probably discuss together. The first is an amendment to the S.E. Special Exception Entitlement Uses, and Carly Aubrey will take our staff lead on that. And the second, the Vertical Subdivision Ordinance, City Attorney Carol McCoskeri will be our lead for that one, although we can team up on it. I also just want to note that we're joined by the Falls Church Gateway Partners on this call. Both of these requests have come out of our discussions with FCGP. So Laura Schoenfeld and Robin Betarrell with Hoffman Associates, Hoffman Associates is on the call, and Amy Friedlander with EYA is on the call. But let's start off with Carly with a staff report on the amendment to the S.E. Special Exception Entitlement Uses.
Good evening, Council. So this first request is to consider potential zoning ordinance amendments to add provisions in the B2 Central Business Zoning District that would allow Council to consider uses that are not otherwise permitted by right in B2 as part of a special exception entitlement applications for developments that are within a special revitalization district for education and economic development, and designated for mixed use on the future land use plan map. So to give some kind of enabling background, the Section 48-90 of the zoning code includes the procedures and criteria for City Council approval of special exceptions, and that text in part states that the City Council may exercise its discretion by allowing for special exceptions to specific regulations and restrictions of the designated zoning districts of the city. So the specific regulations and restrictions that special exceptions can be granted for are then described in the zoning districts in which those special exceptions can be sought. So in the case of special exception entitlements, they may be approved to allow for office, hotel, retail, and multifamily residential uses. And the effect of an S.E. approval is to limit uses to those expressly, expressly permitted by the special exception approval, entitlement approval. And then once that occurs, no other use can be permitted, including those that are listed by right in B2. So it's currently written, it's pretty limited, once an S.E. gets approved, and even during its consideration, what Council can consider in terms of uses. So the purpose of the proposed tax amendment is to allow for consideration of uses that might not be listed in the B2 district, but that might be appropriate for a certain special exception. And so as part of the S.E. amendment for the West Falls Church Project, Falls Church Gateway Partners is requesting the addition of several commercial uses that were not listed in their S.E. that was approved last year. And while some of these are considered a type of retail or are accessory to a permitted use which was approved, some uses are listed in zoning districts other than B2, and some of those include daycare, bowling, pet services such as a vet with temporary boarding, and a radio station, or in this day and age, a podcasting studio. So these uses are specifically called out as by right in other districts, but not in B2. So as provided in the proposed code amendment, the use is not otherwise permitted within, by right in B2, could be approved by Council after a finding that the project meets the special exception requirement, that the uses would contribute significant positive net revenue benefits, build community, and help to achieve the goals and strategies of the special revitalization district, and also related plans and policies. And City Council would be able to attach any conditions deemed necessary to fulfill the intent of the zoning chapter, or to mitigate any of the impacts of those uses. And so the review process would be the same as what we are going through now. It would just be a component that's considered, along with all the other uses that are proposed. The staff report includes proposed, or comp plan goals that the proposed amendments would further, and those include being, providing flexibility to be responsive to market changes, allowing for a greater variety of uses, supporting revitalization, and, I don't know, that's it. So staff recommends placing this item on the November 23rd regular meeting for a first reading, and then overall timing would include a planning commission recommendation on December 16th, and a second reading with Council on January 11th. So that's the presentation, and then I can answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Looks like we have a question. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yeah, Carly, thanks for that. I just want to clarify a couple things. This does mean that ultimately, the uses that are put forth, Council would have the final authority on the approval for that, even after this change?
Correct.
Okay. And I do all, just, I just want to clarify for others that may be listening, this is not an overhaul and complete change to all uses within all B2 zone property throughout the city, correct?
Correct. It's only for special exception entitlements within that certain areas.
So just special exception entitlements in the, in the revitalization districts that are zone B2, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is really very narrowly focused on the West End Project?
Yes.
Okay. What other, what other properties potentially, from a development perspective, could this impact based on what's on our radar right now?
None.
Okay, great. Nope, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks, Carly.
Yep.
Other questions or comments? All right, do you want to move on to the next item?
Sure. The next item is an amendment to the city subdivision code to permit vertical subdivisions to be created. And that's the main purpose of these amendments. There are a few other minor things, like some definitions added as well, but the main purpose is simply to create that the language is virtually identical to language that Arlington has in its code for which it has, that it is used for vertical subdivisions. And vertical subdivisions are, they look in some ways like condos in that you take a building and you divide it up within the building. You're drawing essentially horizontal lines to create stacked ownership units, such as, I believe in this case, what the developer at the West End would like to do is have an owner for the parking, and an owner for retail, and an owner for residential for each site. So we are only allowing big blocks to be created. There's only four parcels can be created in any subdivision of this sort. The difference between condominiums and the horizontal, or I'm sorry, the vertical subdivisions is essentially that in a condominium, there are common areas, and therefore, all the owners end up being interrelated. It creates financing issues that are different from when you just create separate, totally separate parcels that do not have any automatic interrelationship. And so allowing for these separate ownerships is simpler in many ways for the owner. So this is, these amendments are really quite simple. The issues that are going to come up as this moves forward will be with regard to the building code, and we have begun discussions between the developer and the code official to see how this is going to be ultimately worked out, but this will simply give us the option in the future to have property owners do horizontal, do horizontal divisions of land which create a vertical subdivision. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
All right, looks like we've got one. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Carol, so I read this just a little bit different than the last one, that this is going to apply to pretty much any commercial property throughout the city, is that correct?
That's true. It could, yes.
Okay.
It's part of, it's a general subdivision ordinance. If anyone else wanted to create a vertical subdivision on their parcel, they could do that.
Okay. The, I see it's limited, I believe it's limited to, is it, and again, I'm not an attorney, so I'm trying to wade through this, is it limited to four subdivisions on an individual property?
Yes.
Okay.
To four, to four parcels, because it's not intended to replace a condominium code. It's intended to be where, to allow for property owners who want to divide various uses on the property to, to, to have them be separately-owned parcels of land. And so we're not allowing for 50 condominiums on a site to be separately divided using this mechanism. Those would still be done through condominium, so that all the common areas and regulations are available for them.
Okay. I mean, generally speaking, I'm supportive of this. I, I've seen this and worked with this provision in other jurisdictions, and from, from an industry and a business perspective, I think this allows especially larger mixed-use projects like our West Falls Church Project to be more liquid in terms of, you know, transactional, transactionally liquid, being able to sell to different owners as opposed to selling it in large blocks. So I am supportive of that because I think generally speaking, what I've seen is that the individual pieces, when they trade, can be worth more than they are as a whole. So selling off a retail piece of an office building, or selling off, you know, different asset types for a building depending on use and the person that wants to buy them. So from a fiscal perspective, I think that this is a good thing. I did have a question, though, just thinking a little further down the road, outside of the West End Project. My experience has been, if someone comes in and wants to subdivide a commercial property, one, it generally triggers a reassessment for property tax purposes, and generally speaking, again, generally speaking, the value of those individual pieces, once they are subdivided, the assessment actually increases because the individual pieces, again, are worth greater than, than they were in aggregate when they were kept together. Has there been much discussion from a staff perspective on the, the property tax implications of doing this?
We have not had a great deal of discussion on that issue. Ryan, the assessor, has certainly been kept involved, and I think he has spoken with folks at Arlington, but we have not, I have not been involved in looking at a question of whether this would increase or decrease revenue through taxes.
What I would say is, and this is just kind of for general consumption, in, in Virginia, unlike Maryland, for example, where they reassess properties every three years, the, the state of Virginia, most jurisdictions, will sometimes, given the fact that it's an annual reassessment, adjust assessments between the annual revows if a property is under construction or it's being subdivided. And so, you know, I would make sure that, that staff is prepared. I know Ryan is familiar with this because he was president of VAO, but that we're prepared to, to understand what this means if other commercial properties come in and try to subdivide, and also, I guess, be prepared to educate them on what may actually happen to the assessment if they decide to subdivide. We don't have enough commercial property, I think, to where even if everybody came in at the same time, it would meaningfully, meaningfully move the needle. But it is an opportunity for us to correct valuations throughout the year when folks do come in to, to subdivide, or what I affectionately call condo-ing up a property by, by different asset types. So I think it's something we should probably talk about. We don't have to figure it out tonight, but there is kind of a downstream impact to, to permitting this. But generally speaking, I'm, I'm very supportive of this because I think it is a benefit fiscally, and I think it helps the projects transact. The last question I have, Carol, and I think I know the answer to this. We have a capital event fee built into our agreement with Gateway Partners. I assume that by this, by this means of vertical subdivision, it doesn't impact, it doesn't impact the, the fiscals associated with those individual pieces now selling outside of the whole?
I think it will not, but I will look into that and make sure we get back to you further.
Okay. I was, I was trying to look for the, for the language that we agreed to before this, and I could not find it. Maybe the mayor has got a better, better memory than I do on this, but I want to make sure that by doing this, it doesn't impact that capital event fee, or if someone from, from Gateway Partners can speak to that. That would be my only reservation otherwise, for this particular deal. Otherwise, I think that this is a benefit just in general for future development in the city.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Carol, let me ask you one then. So when you start separating the parking from the this use and the that use, is there any, how does the city supervise that to ensure that the different parcels or parts continue to have the proper amount of parking? For example, at a project, I think it was the Byron, there was issues with some of the visitor parking, to my recollection, and it got carved off in a different way, and so some of the units didn't have convenient parking anymore. That's just my recollection. Someone with a better memory than I probably remembers the details of that. But could you discuss how we would ensure that adequate parking, when they do this, is preserved for each of the particular uses?
Yes, the requirements will be within the special exception approval for the parking allocable to and available for each uses, and there will be various covenants and easements among.
I think a lot of us got cut off, Carol, maybe all of us.
All right, so there will be various, oh, so let's wait till everybody gets back in. I see people.
Yeah, pulling everybody back in.
Yeah, hold on. Okay, thanks.
Getting all our council members back.
I guess my question is how we ensure, I understand that the VCs live on sort of in their totality, but how do we ensure or look behind to make sure that the documents, the transactional documents, the REA or the whatevers.
The CCRs.
Yes, preserve that. Do we look at that or we just assume that to be true?
No, we will be looking at that as this moves forward. We'll be looking at those documents as we approach, for a subdivision like this and as we approach closings and get the guarantees after special exception approval, we'll be looking at those documents to ensure that they will, they will require provision of the parking for each of the uses.
So we would, we would look prior to approving one of these to look and say, okay, what do you got? Oh, here's our, you know, reciprocal easement agreement, here's our CCRs or whatever it is. Oh, let's see how you treat parking. Okay, everybody has access. Or everybody agrees to honor the voluntary concessions that may apply or something like that. You're going to be looking at that in connection with approval of this kind of subdivision?
Yes.
Each time, in each instance?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we got a few questions here. Phil Duncan's got his hand up and maybe another as well, but let's start with Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, just briefly on the Byron, I mean, the problem there, I think, is that the party that manages the retail space is not in, or was not in good communication with the party that manages the residential condominiums and the parking. And so we've ended up short of parking for the commercial spaces out front. And that's an example of, I'm not sure what the legal structure is, but that's an example of a relationship that has not worked well and that I hope we can revisit at some point. But more broadly, and I don't want to go down a rabbit hole here, but at some point, while we're considering this, I'd just like to understand, so if, let's say, as was explained, residential component of a building is going to be appealing to lenders, just because that's the way it is here in Falls Church, the parking component is going to be of interest, probably appealing. The retail ground floor component may not be of as much interest. And so I'm wondering, you know, right now, if the party that's building the residential is sort of tethered to the ground floor retail, they, you know, they've got some incentive to perform with the ground floor retail in order to accomplish their residential goals. I would want us not to decouple that entirely if possible. Let's say that the residential and the parking, you know, were successes, the banks would loan and make money off those, but perhaps the ground floor was not. What happens in the case of a default of the ground floor owner when the other two parts of the deal are successful? I mean, I guess the answer is it reverses to the bank if ultimately no one is willing to buy it. At any rate, given our very small experience with the Byron, I would like to understand a little bit better how we can make the relationship, as the mayor says, between all the parties productive financially for them and, and good for the city too.
We, we will have, I mean, and we have had agreements to have guarantees for the, guarantees for all of the vertical construction at one time. And so that is, in that way, we would be ensuring that every piece would be built and operational. However, it is true that each piece, the residential piece would be able to function independently. It will have to have a lobby on the first floor carved out of part of the retail section. So they will be able to function independently and we can do our best through the ownership or through the special exception approval to ensure that everybody gets moving. But that's something we will be keeping in mind and we can talk about somewhat further.
All right, Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thanks, Mayor Charter. I was kicked off for a little while, so this question may have been addressed. I apologize if you've already said it. Is this something that will only apply to new buildings or can existing buildings like the Byron now retroactively apply for this kind of horizontal division of airspace?
Theoretically, an existing building could apply to subdivide their building horizontally. It is not very easy. As I sort of noted before, the most difficult part of these horizontal subdivisions comes in the building code arena because of the requirements between these separate ownership parcels. And so we difficult for an existing building to be able to have the correct safe fire rating between the parcels, et cetera. But that would have to be worked out on a case by case basis with the code official. I think that there are occasions in Arlington where it has been done and they may have in the past allowed some modifications to do that, but we would have to consider each one individually.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, are there any other comments or questions about these items? All right, thanks very much. Let's move on to our next item, which is amendment to the special exception criteria. Mr. Shields, who's handling that?
So I'll do a quick introduction and Paul Stoddard will do our staff lead for this. We have, I think at the council retreat and possibly before that, there was discussion about a strategic look at the city's special exception ordinance. And I think some of the discussion at that time was to look at the special exception ordinance to facilitate some of our smaller infill redevelopment sites, but also just to update it in general. And also to think about how it can be used to incentivize or to encourage or facilitate affordable housing in the city. And so in the draft council work plan that the council's looked at, it is included in the work plan and the EDC committee has taken an initial look at some possibilities. And so I'll turn it over to Paul for a walk through the staff report. And what we're looking for tonight is council feedback and discussion on what is a really important topic for the city. The special exception ordinance, of course, has been the main land use tool by which the city has encouraged redevelopment of some of our commercial parcels in the city and has done so with, with great effect in terms of community benefits and walkability and meeting school capital cost needs, meeting affordable housing needs and other community goals. But so with that introduction, let me turn it over to Mr. Stoddard. Thank you.
Good evening, Wyatt. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. I'm of course happy to give the presentation. I know I was there at the EDC meeting, but I think Ms. Shana Schaefer is on the line and she has really taken the lead role in drafting up the code amendment as well as the staff report. So unless there's a technical issue, I'd actually like to ask her to go ahead and give the staff presentation.
Before we do that, I wonder if there might be a technical issue. Ms. Heath has got her hand up, but she norms as a speaker. Celeste, is there something going on you'd like to tell us about?
I just wanted to make sure that all of council got back on, at least. I think everybody got kicked out. So I have been in contact with the vice mayor and I'm just wondering if we can just get council to shout out and make sure.
All right, if you're not able, if you weren't able to get on, let us know right now. Go ahead and speak up. I'm kidding. How did you want to do that, Celeste? Did you want to do a roll call or something or what would you like to do?
I think it's a good idea, just to make sure everybody's on.
Okay.
Mayor, I have the document in front of me if you'd like me to do the roll call.
Okay.
Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Confirming all are present.
All right, so let's, let's keep on going. Ms. Schaefer, welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here with you all tonight and talk about this topic of taking a look at the special exception criteria. As was mentioned, this is a follow-up item to the draft City Council work plan that's focused on facilitating smaller infill development and promoting affordable housing. So a little bit of background, the city's 2005 comprehensive plan identified planning opportunity areas throughout the city. And then the focus of those plans, typically the vision is for these redeveloped commercial areas to be revitalized and to have density greater than 3.0 floor area ratio. And the small area plans really emphasize the importance and value of vibrant commercial areas that have a mix of commercial, civic and residential uses. In terms of tools to implement that vision from the small area plans, the city zoning code would be the primary tool that would help to support reinvestment within the city's planning opportunity areas. The city's SE code currently includes both primary and secondary criteria for reviewing development proposals within these areas. So looking specifically at the, the primary criteria, this has been summarized as four general tests that can be considered when we're looking at proposed applications. First, does the application, is it consistent with the city's comprehensive plan? Second, would the proposal result in a significant increase in net new commercial square footage? Third, would it result in positive net new commercial and residential revenues? And then fourth is an option that allows a project to be exempted from number two and three if the project has 75% or more affordable housing. These SE provisions have been very successful over the years in adding several mixed use projects that have enhanced the city's commercial areas. And so these are summarized in table one. As can be seen, these have generally resulted in substantial fiscal benefits to the city. There have also been a number of projects that have not been able to get through the special exception process for one reason or another. And a couple of these projects are summarized in table number three. And so the focus here tonight is, is on amendments to the, to the SE code that might have helped these projects to get through. In terms of staff analysis, the staff recommendation is to take a look back at these, the primary and secondary criteria. Additionally, too, with recent reports for real estate in the region showing that traditional commercial uses, including office and retail, are overbuilt in the area surrounding Falls Church. This is one reason that new space for developers have provided some financial loss and this has led some developers to need to be able to compensate for that loss by proposing larger, denser projects to maintain a level of return needed to finance the project. And again, you know, after all of these conversations that have been had by the community as part of the small area planning process, it's recommended to again, take a look back at this special exception code focusing on how a net change in commercial square footage could help to, instead of focusing on that, simply providing new commercial square footage that includes uses, building form and our architecture can help to revitalize these areas and provide the vibrancy that the city is looking for. Additionally, given that the age of most of the city's commercial properties, then any new space, it would help to bring substantial economic returns to the city. And so this is something that should be evaluated as part of the SE criteria. In terms of a proposed schedule, obviously looking for council feedback on this tonight, but it's proposed to take this back to council for a work session on December 7th and then from there, first reading and referral out to boards and commissions on December 14th. And that concludes the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open up to questions or comments and the like. Anyone, it looks like we've got one, let's see who that is. Ms. Hardy?
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Schaefer, for that. Before I get to my question, I just want to provide a general comment. I think as a member of the EDC, we've talked about this several times. So I won't speak for Phil and Ross, but I think speaking for myself only, I think as written the SE, normally I may, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But I think given the way it's written, market forces and land prices, I think we're seeing that the SE as written really creates the incentive to build these large three, four acre projects. And between that, and I think what we're hearing from the community is whether we really have appetite for a big four acre project in every corner. And with the economy changing and obviously the future of work and commercial space probably looking pretty different, I do think it's time for us to modernize this. So I do support this. I appreciate Shannon and Paul, the thoughtful work that has gone into this. I know that this is really important for the city and not something that we want to take lightly. So I do appreciate how detailed the staff report has been as well as all the considerations you put in. So my question is on those orange projects. I think that was in, further up in the report. As I recall, both of those would also have been condo projects, which I know we've talked about as a missing housing type for us. Would they have stood a better chance had these SE changes been in place when those were proposed?
I know Paul might be able to speak with a little bit more background on Tradition Place. As far as Park and Lee, one of the big issues there was because there was some existing commercial on the property, they were not able to meet that net increase in commercial in order to get through without making the project more dense, which was an issue for the community surrounding it. So that was part of the reason why that project did not make it through. And if Paul is available to chime in on Tradition Place, he may be able to provide more background on that one.
Sure. If memory serves, on Tradition Place, now a few years passed, but I think when the developers initially came in, they did come in with a shorter building that I think had a more attractive transition to the, to the surrounding residential neighborhood. And then I think as they got into project design and there was discussion about the economics and the voluntary concessions that would be discussed or floated, ultimately the building started to get higher in order to compensate for that. And ultimately, it pushed it into a position that I think was, was not acceptable to the, to the community.
Got it. So besides, obviously, the SE written to kind of essentially push projects to be in the bigger territory, which may not have fit for those two projects, I guess we're missing out on housing types too, which we say is important, like condos. We've talked about how we haven't had one built in 15 years now. And so that would have been the opportunity. And obviously those fiscal numbers look pretty healthy too. My second question is, I know anytime we touch something as important as the SE, we need to be careful and cognizant of unintended consequences. I know we discussed in the EDC about leaving that fiscal test in there, but has staff thought about any unintended consequences if we do touch the SE? Or does that fiscal test serve as kind of a good backstop to prevent anything from happening we wouldn't want otherwise?
So I would add that the special exception process, of course, is a discretionary process for council. So any project, simply because it meets the test does not mean that council has to approve it if council has a legitimate reason for not approving the project. So I, and I don't believe any of the, the changes that we have proposed would cause any, any unintended consequences that council should be concerned about.
Great. Thank you. That's it for now.
Mr. Snyder?
Thanks very much. So let me ask a couple of questions because I'm, I'm still trying to understand and I think the public needs to understand the potential ramifications. So one of the proposed changes is now to allow a 75% residential building in what is now commercial as long as it's affordable housing. And there's no need to do anything with the commercial. Is that right? In other words, you could eliminate all the commercial, build an affordable housing project in what had previously been a commercially zoned area. Is that correct?
So the option to do 75% affordable housing has actually always been in the special So the option to do 75% affordable housing has actually always been in the special exception code, but it's something that simply has not been feasible per the market. And so no project has, has come through that way. So that is something that is, that is currently in the code, and staff is actually looking for more direction and more research on best practices for what that number might be in terms of what the, the community is prioritizing for affordable housing. But, but just to say that, again, that, that provision has always been in the code if someone wanted to go that route.
So what are we changing? Because you said you were, when I heard the presentation, as I recall, the staff presentation was we have one, two, and three, but we're adding four. So now you're saying we're not adding four. I'm just trying to understand. I have a number of questions to understand where all this is going. So why don't you answer that one for me?
Sure. So if you look at attachment three, there are some notes on, on what the staff changes are. So the first primary criteria, as existing, says, is the project consistent with the city's comprehensive plan? And so the change would be to simply add a reference to the city's small area plans as well. On the second one, the recommendation is to remove the word "net" in front of new commercial square footage. And the reason for that is that that really treats different properties differently. Say you have a property that has a large amount of commercial space, but it, it may be a square footage that is simply sprawling out across, across the property, and it may be relatively low level of, of commercial space. And so that wouldn't necessarily be something that is desirable as, as maybe a newer building that was more vibrant and had a uses that the community was looking for. And so in order to meet that net test, a, a project would have to have more square footage than currently exist on the property. And so that's, that's the big change there. And then on the third one, there's no change recommended there. It's, it'll remain as the resulting development produces substantial positive net new commercial and residential revenues to the city. And then on the fourth one, this is something that staff is recommending additional research and analysis on whether that 75% is feasible and if that number should be altered.
So, okay, I'm even more confused after that explanation about what we're doing with D. Because the staff presentation originally was we were changing the relationship between D, C, and B. Now you're saying we're not, but we're asking a question. Tell me more about what that change, I, I, tell me more about the background of that change. You're just questioning whether it ought to remain in the ordinance, and yet when it was described by staff earlier, it was described as a change. If it's in the ordinance already, then it's not a change.
So the change would be whether that number should be 75%. Should it be 50%? That, that would be the change. What percentage of, of affordable housing could a project propose and be exempt from, from B and C?
So the, the real change is the relationship then between D, C, and B? That if you had D, you don't need to meet C and B? Is that the change?
Well, so that change, that change always exists provided you're, you're providing 75% affordable housing. So, so the change is, 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 does the community want to keep it at 75%? Or does that number, does the community want to lower that number in order to encourage affordable housing?
Dave, I think there's two, I think there's two main changes. One is taking the word "net" out.
Find out what the changes are, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
I'm just trying to find out what the changes are.
No, I, I was gonna try to, try to give you what I think is the short version of it. One is taking the word out, "net new." So remember with Perouse Malick, you know, his project, they, his two houses were considered commercial, and the notion was the building had to replace that and possibly add more. And so this change, taking out "net new," would mean you don't have to increase the amount of commercial from what you had before, potentially. So if you have a building there, like an old house, that's a bookstore or something like that, the new building doesn't have to equal or exceed the amount of commercial that's in there right now. That's my understanding of the, one of the big changes. Is that correct, Ms. Schaefer?
Yes, that's correct.
And then the second one, it just relates to the amount of percentage for affordable housing. And that's not even in here right now. I think that's just a consideration of that. So right now, there's not a new number for that. So those are my understanding, or my understanding of the two major changes proposed.
So you provided one example of "net new," but it's highly possible that a project with a lot more residential could add no additional square foot of commercial and still be approved. Is that what I'm, what I'm saying under this proposed amendment?
So they would still be required to include significant new commercial square footage, but it wouldn't be a, a "net new." So basically, it's, it's not about looking what is currently existing on the property, but it's, it's looking at, at what they're proposing.
Yeah, I, I think the idea before was that you would not only replace the existing commercial, because it says "net new," so it would have to be new commercial. What you're removing is the "net." So in essence, what you're now permitting with projects, and you can debate whether this is a good thing or not, what you're really doing is saying now that I could, I could build, I could build on commercially zoned area, a significant residential project that adds not one additional square foot of commercial, where in the past, in order to get approved, you would need not only to replace the old commercial with new, but that it needed to be "net new." In other, in other words, more than was there before. Because by definition, you'd be replacing the old commercial with new, and you want "net new," which means that you would be adding in addition to replacing. Under your proposed change, theoretically, a project could come in and simply replace the square footage of commercial. There's no requirement to add to commercial square footage. Is that what I'm, my understanding?
Mr. Snyder, this is Jim Snyder on the phone. I don't know if you, I wasn't able to get in through Teams, so I'm on a phone line. But a lot of this is trying to get at the value proposition. In other words, new, modern commercial space may have much more value than old, even larger square footage space that may be vacant or in very poor condition. So this would give the council the ability to make a judgment as to the value of the project coming forward, the vitality of the commercial space that's proposed, and the entire package. It's really to give the council more flexibility to look at the whole package and not be constrained by the word "net." We have a lot of old space in the city, some of it not very good shape, some of it vacant. And new space is worth a whole, if it's done properly and you have the right tenants, is worth a whole lot more and produces a lot more taxes and economic activity. So this is to some extent to give the council more flexibility to entertain and look at the whole package, particularly the value side of whatever is proposed. It doesn't obligate you to do it, but it gives you more flexibility than the current code. And one of the objectives was for this ordinance to read and sound more like the planning work that the council and the planning commission have been doing for the last 10 years in terms of the vision for the city, smaller area planning for the city, and the comprehensive plans for the city, and the notion of revitalizing our older areas. So that was part of the idea behind this, this change to the ordinance proposal.
Yeah, I appreciate all those words, but I'm just trying to figure out what the impact. So under current ordinance, you could authorize a, a new building, which by definition would replace the old commercials, so you'd have new, but you also had to add the commercial square footage. What you're doing with this is eliminating the requirement to add the commercial square footage and just simply require the replacement of the commercial square footage. So I think it's a significant change, and I think it's one that people need to be aware of as they make their, their, their decisions on this. Thanks. Those are the questions I have for now. I'm sure I'll have more. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lipton House, and then Ms. Hiscott.
Thanks. Shane and Paul, Jim, I appreciate you guys putting this together. I know we've been talking about it for quite some time in EDC, and there've been some comments made about this that I think are, are spot on. And the first is about flexibility, giving council more flexibility in evaluating projects and the value proposition, especially considering some of the changing values and frankly, just the changing nature of, of development in general. The second is I think it's important to note that, you know, this is still within the special exception process. And so giving us the ability to have the final say is something that I think that is still important for folks to recognize. This is not a wholesale change to buy right development. And thirdly, the genesis for this, in my mind at least, was to give council the opportunity to evaluate more infill projects. And that is giving developers an opportunity to present to us and making it through staff review. So it's not a hard stop based on just frankly, a few small language changes. I, I think that all of these are, are improvements and a modernization, so to speak, of the special exception tool, which I think from an, you know, intended perspective, it was effective and, and, but is, I think, right now, a fairly blunt instrument. And I think that Jim, as Jim had mentioned, in some of our transitional areas, our T1 areas, and some of the older, what I'll call homes converted to businesses that remained vacant, this gives us an opportunity to see some, what I would say are probably pretty innovative small infill projects to generate more revenue, generate more economic vibrancy in those areas through some of these smaller projects. And, and I agree with Letty, one comment she made about, we, I, I think we've kind of reached our, I wouldn't say reached it, but may be getting to that point of what kind of appetite do we have left for three, four, five acre projects? That there are areas of the city that simply, the economics of those will not change, given the current language. And a lot of it does have to do with that one, that, that one word, the "net new" commercial square footage. Frankly, you know, I, I don't think that trying to force a significant increase in commercial, and, and the mayor had mentioned the Park and Lee site, the economics of that site will just never make sense in, in its current state if someone is required to substantially increase what is effectively residential turned commercial to build on a site that's small. And we are missing out on opportunities. And this is not, this is not about opening the floodgates to additional residential. This is opening up opportunities and flexibility for council to at least have an opportunity to review more projects, innovative projects, and things that maybe the city has never contemplated, never seen, but would be of benefit to the city. So all of these changes, I think, are, are welcomed. And frankly, some of them important in narrowing, narrowing, narrowing in on what are, what are considered, considered value statements in the projects that we launched specifically in section two and some of the secondary criteria. So, you know, I support, I support these changes, and I am certainly fine with, you know, us, us still having the final say so as it makes through. But I think that this is incredibly important for us if we are looking for more creative, innovative projects in places that simply it is not economically feasible for anyone to propose a development, and it certainly wouldn't even make it through staff review because of some of the more blunt tools associated with, with this, with this special exception language as it stands. So, you know, I, I support this. I'd support additional tweaks as well. I'll wrap this up by, by asking a question to, to Shayna and Jim and, and Carly, and this is more maybe a semantics. Given the change to 1B, should 1C be reworded to say positive net new commercial and/or residential revenue to the city? I, I don't think that that's been an issue in past projects when we've looked at the percentage of commercial versus residential and a special, a special exception entitlement. But does that flexibility need to be there as well? Or, or how does staff interpret that net new commercial and residential revenue to the city in light of a change to 1B?
Well, this is Jim Snyder. I'm in favor for the council to have as much flexibility as possible. You're elected to do the citizens' will, and you have good judgment, and having a tool that lets you make that balanced judgment, to me, is a good thing. So I, and we're trying to create more tax base and more, a more vibrant community, both residentially, commercially, and culturally. Flexibility, I think, is something that gives you more power to fine-tune projects to fit the particular situation.
So Jim, do you think that in interpretation of the fiscals on a project, in the example of a, of a, of a Park and Lee, where yes, you're gonna, you're gonna replace the 3,000 square feet of commercial that are there with, with brand new, you know, a brand new 3,000 square foot commercial chunk in a residential development, it, it will increase the commercial residential revenue. But how does staff interpret substantial positive net new commercial revenue? And I guess the point I'm making is if you're changing 1B, and you're not, not changing it to "and/or residential revenue to the city," does that become a barrier? And effectively, is, is 1B become a wash? Or is it, and again, I don't want to get into semantics and grammar, are we looking at commercial and residential in the aggregate? Or is it every project has to produce substantially positive net new commercial, hard stop, and residential? See what I'm saying?
I interpret that as commercial and, and residential combined in total.
Okay.
Have substantial.
I feel that's the way it's typically been interpreted. I just want to clarify that. So if that's the way it's interpreted, then I don't, I'm not recommending any changes. And, and I, for the most part, like what you guys have put together. So thank you.
But clarifying things to be clear intent is always a good thing to make it clear. So I think your point is well taken.
Ms. Hiscott?
Yes, I just have a quick question about the 75% affordable housing. You mentioned looking for feedback on that percentage. And I'm wondering what information you're getting on what's palatable or what the developers are willing to do in terms of the percentage that they'd be willing to accept and feel like they still made enough money off the project. So we can meet our affordable housing goals and our developers meet their, you know, their revenue goals. Like, what do you hear? What do you see the balance could, should be in the percentage for affordable housing?
This is Paul Stoddard. Let me jump in on this one. This is, I, I will say that we need some more research on this one at the staff level. The reason we flagged it here is, is that we know we haven't gotten any proposals from the private side that would, that would satisfy this, this criteria. And so I think that what we wanted to do as staff is, is raise the question here tonight to ask if there was interest in the council to explore this percentage. So certainly, we could go out to contacts in the development community and ask them sort of napkin math, sort of what range could you get into? And then we could bring that number back to council. So if that's of interest, we're happy to do that research.
I'd, I'd definitely be interested because like I, as you said, it hasn't brought anything yet. So if we want to know what will bring it in, I think, who better to ask than the people who would be bringing it in? And then we can make decisions from there, whether it's palatable for our community, whether it meets our goals, and brings in that, that revenue. So, thank you.
Sure. Yeah. And, and to be fair to the, to the folks who worked hard to get this criteria in in 2011, really, when this was added, the intent was to allow for sort of a publicly funded or publicly supported affordable housing project to go in. And so I think really the conversation is, is, is it of interest to the community to, to lower that percentage to a, to a point where it might attract predominantly a privately funded affordable housing project to come in?
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Hiscott that I would like to know more about the market's interest in delivering us a mixed income building, if that's what it would be called, where we would have some market rate units and other affordable units of, you know, various mixes, 180, 60, 40% uh, of, you know, various mixes, 180, 60, 40% AMI. Uh, you know, since this language was put in almost 10 years ago, I think we've learned a lot more about and seen a lot, uh, more of other jurisdictions' efforts in this area. And, uh, that kind of building, which has a mix of incomes, uh, would be, I think, something that we would want to pursue. At least I would like to, you know, go out and find what, uh, other developers have done in other jurisdictions. Uh, and I don't need to repeat to Ross and Letty, who covered our EDC discussions very well, um, I'm on the point of, uh, positive net new commercial and residential revenue, I guess I'm not sure why we don't just say positive net revenue. Uh, I mean, we've learned over the last 20 years that residential, uh, is, is a, is a moneymaker here in Falls Church. I, I don't think we knew that 20 years ago, which is understandable, but now, you know, the data show very convincingly that that is the case. So the distinction between commercial and residential is, um, you know, a vestige of that era where we thought that residential was going to be cost laden and commercial was going to be a moneymaker, and that's not necessarily, uh, the case. So I don't know that we even need to make that distinction there, and as opposed, uh, and the matter of significant increase in, uh, uh, net new commercial square footage, uh, I mean, I think it's important to be transparent, and it's, it's possible that some, uh, proposal could come to us that would actually have less square footage, uh, in terms of commercial than the existing use, uh, but the revenue generated by that commercial, uh, would be greater, uh, and certainly, the revenue generated by the combination of commercial and residential on the new proposal would be much greater than we're able to get out of the land currently. So, uh, with that in mind, this language would give council, again, not require us, but just give us the discretion of having that conversation and asking if a building proposal, uh, is really, uh, going into a location like, say, on Park Avenue, where there's just not a lot of natural market interest in commercial. Um, it's just a fact, and, uh, that would give the council an opportunity to at least discuss that, rather than, as Ross and Letty said, uh, proposals dying before we ever even get the chance to discuss them. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Other comments or questions? So I'll just give a few, I mean, I think in some ways, the change, the proposed change, at least as currently written, is, is fairly modest. Um, I would note, um, that the two projects that didn't go forward, um, the requests, I thought, were also modest in terms of commercial components. We're basically talking about maybe some office space on the ground floors of these buildings, and so, um, I, I would note, just in my own experience, and maybe all of our experiences here in the city, that developers of residential projects rarely want to include anything but residential units, because they make less money on a per square foot basis. But I think the question goes back to, um, you know, do we want to balance tax base? Do we want to have ratios that are closer to 50/50 than we have right now, and predominantly Falls Church has a, um, a predominance of residential for a tax base? So, um, I, I would just note that I think it is important, even in these projects or smaller projects, to keep in mind that there is a benefit to having a commercial component. And so, uh, I would just, just sort of make that note, um, at the, the present, and I'm not saying I'm against the change that's proposed, but I would just ask that we keep that in mind in our discussion, um, going forward. Um, is there, um, any other comments, or should we move on to the next item? All right, let's go ahead on then, thank you, Jim, for joining us, Paul, and everyone else, uh, from planning that joined us, uh, Ms. Schaefer and the like. Um, let's go on now to council liaison assignments. I think that's our next item, and remember, we do have a closed session tonight as well. Uh, who's going to handle this bar, uh, of Mr. Shields?
Well, uh, I think Ms., uh, Heath put this together, is she still on the call?
I'm here. Hello?
Okay, so the, the idea is, is mostly to divvy up Dan's assignments, and if anyone wants to change, is that really what we're talking about tonight, Ms. Heath?
Yes, that's correct, and, and we'll just, um, add it to the next regular meeting agenda if you all are ready to go. So you can talk about it tonight and think about it if you want, let me know how you'd like to fill things in, and I'll get it ready for the next regular meeting.
Okay, and so with respect to that, Ms. Hiscott, I mean, obviously, the simplest thing would be for you to step in Dan's shoes in some ways, but I would ask, have you had a chance to look at Dan's assignments, and do you have thoughts of the things you're really interested in, or maybe some you're not so much interested, or other things you might want to do? Um, do you have any thoughts maybe about, about your interests?
Uh, yes, I, I would be happy to step in and take the assignments that Dan had. Uh, I'd be happy to talk if others wanted, were interested in, in some of those opportunities, architectural board or other things, um, but as it currently stands, I'm happy to take what he had been working on and step into those roles, and then, you know, can just additionally join, um, as a listener into the other areas of interest, um, specifically like EDC, you know, we already have three members, so, um, I don't think I necessarily need to formally be the liaison, but interested in participating in them as well.
Okay, so are there folks that may want to change, or there, have you had any discussions, Ms. Hiscott, with anyone else about, hey, we'd like to swap this thing, are you interested in this or that, or?
I have not.
Okay, so I guess maybe instead of doing this right now, um, in a public meeting, maybe, um, if you have ones that you're really interested in, you could send an email to, um, Ms. Heath, and if there are folks who want to switch, maybe they can also let Ms. Heath know, and then we could see if there's any way we can kind of do this fairly easily of, of a, a switching back and forth instead of doing that right now. Would that work for folks if there's any, you're kind of, you had your run and you're ready to try something different, or there's something on Dan's list you really want to do, maybe you could switch out of that? Would maybe having Celeste be the point person, would that work for folks?
Great.
Okay, is that okay with everybody? I'm going to take that as a yes, or everybody doesn't know how to get the mute button off. Um, okay.
Yeah, and if, if you can just look at the regional, uh, the COG, he was on quite a few COG, um, things, so if some of the folks that are, um, Mr. Snyder and Mayor Tarter, folks who have been on for a while, might want to talk to Ms. Hiscott about, um, some of those roles and how they work, because they're a little different than what our groups do, our city groups, so.
Yeah, COG can be very rewarding, but also having to get down to DC, I guess now it's virtual, but it can be kind of a time drain, uh, driving or, um, taking Metro down to DC, but it's, it's pretty good work, working with our regional colleagues. But yeah, we can maybe talk about that offline, and Mr. Snyder has a great deal of experience with that as well. But why don't we, um, sort of use as a general starting point, Dan's assignments, and then things you're not as much interested in, or maybe some things you want to try, let Celeste know, and then maybe she can be a conduit, and then anyone who's kind of tired of what they're doing, or wants to pick up something Dan did, maybe again, reach out to Celeste, and then Celeste, maybe you could be the broker to try to sort this stuff out by our next meeting?
Sure, glad to.
Is that okay with everybody? All right, I'm going to take that as a yes. Um, so we do, we do have a few things on closed session, before we get there, why don't we talk briefly about council's schedule and comments? Does anyone have any comments? Yes?
Going back to assignments, I think the one that was not listed, or maybe I missed it, was the library oversight committee that Dan was on.
Yeah, it's, um...
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, there it is.
So do you want to be on that, Letty?
Do I get to say not it?
What's that?
Do I get to say not it?
Well, you brought it up.
I just want to make sure it got covered. Uh, I'm happy to take it on, but I think while the kids are not in school, it'll just be hard for me to jump into more things right now.
All right, so...
It meets at 3:00 in the afternoon, too. It's an afternoon meeting, so that really mean not. And you're actually a member of that, you're not a liaison, um, for Arts and Humanities and Library Construction, you're member, voting members of those boards.
We thank Ms. Hardy for stepping forward on that. Um, so what, um, all right, so yes, that is one of the items as well, Dan was very passionate about that, uh, and had some background in construction management, I know that's a difficult one to fill, and so, um, I don't know if anybody, what's that?
I've dialed into all their meetings, and what you said is exactly right. I'm passionate about it, too, and do not have any of his construction expertise, you know, like, things seem to be going swimmingly with the project, so, but, you know, I don't know what we do about that. I mean, I, I do dial in and listen, and, uh, if I heard anything that I thought you all should know about, I'd let you know, but the manager has kept us pretty well informed, and things seem to be going pretty well.
Yeah, I think that committee is doing its job, it, the, the, uh, community members who are there are, are doing a great job. I don't think I ever say one word in that committee meeting, I just nod and say, "Thank you, thank you."
That sounds good.
Sure, and, and in terms of the regional organizations, um, I'm, I think, because I, um, I've been on the air quality committee, I want to stay on that, and the climate and energy environment policy committee feeds normally into that, but human services and public safety policy committee, if someone's interested in taking that, I'd be willing to do a trade and go on to climate and energy and give up human services, so.
Did you want a tri- a draft pick later, though, to be named, Dave, for that? Do you want a draft pick to be named later, uh, for that trade? Forget it, it's not funny, just don't worry about it. All right, so, we could do a little bit of that now, but if, it might be easiest just to go through Celeste, um, and have Celeste be the conduit, or connect people who want to do some trades, but I think most all of us, Ms. Hiscott, be willing to try to accommodate you if you have a strong interest in anything.
I just have one more question, too, the last one on there that's showing the Chesapeake Bay Water Resources Policy Committee, Mr. Lichtenhouse is the alternate, maybe he wants to become the member.
Yeah, I, um, I'd assumed that actually was going to happen. I was going to let, uh, Celeste know about that, but yeah, Mary, but that was the, the plan, I've been attending, I've been attending those meetings, Dan had kind of handed that off, um, earlier in the, uh, in the year, so I'll stay on that one.
Can you shoot an email to me about that, so I don't get lost, even though I'm writing it down? Thank you.
All right, why don't we go on to council's schedule and comments? Anybody have any scheduling, uh, items or other comments? Go ahead, Ms. Conley.
We have a joint session with the school board on the 7th of December, I see, on the budget?
That is correct.
And that's going to be a Google Teams meeting? Or Microsoft Teams?
We haven't decided that, but that would be our preference.
Okay, so it'll be a virtual meeting, not anything based?
Yeah, that, that is the plan, that's right.
Okay. So we don't get dinner? It's been nice to have dinner the last couple of years.
We can still get dinner, just make our houses. Um, Ms. Hiscott, did you have a comment?
Uh, I do, I'm not sure, um, since I'm the rookie here, I'm not sure if this is the right time to be doing this, but, um, I know that tomorrow, the, um, the electronics meetings expansion will be discussed at the state level, um, and, uh, I've just listened to a lot of people talking about how important continuing electronic meetings will be post-COVID in order to make sure that we have equal representation from those who might not other, otherwise be able to participate, either, you know, handicapped, or they're taking care of children, or elder care, or have transportation issues. I know transportation is less of an issue in Falls Church City, because you can walk most places, um, but at a, you know, state and regional level, it's pretty important that, um, we take a look and seeing what we can and can't do at a state level, and how we can apply it here, so I don't know if this is where you make a suggestion that it go to, um, on our legislative committee agenda. I apologize if I'm asking these things at the wrong time, but I just, uh, I think that was really important to learn a lot about, and, and I think we've had a lot more participation in local government and regional government, with people being able to call in, or being able to not have to go in person to make comments to the council.
So great, great point, Ms. Hiscott, the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, of which we're a part, uh, regionally sent a letter in support of basically what you just said. So we weighed in as a region, um, all of the jurisdictions in Northern Virginia, essentially.
And Mayor, this is something could be in your legislative program, is certainly under study now, and will come up during the next regular session in January, so it can be something I can include if, include if you wish, which will, we're scheduled to bring to council for work session December 7th and adoption on December 14th.
If I can chime in on this one, um, the elected women of Northern Virginia met yesterday, so this was a big topic of our discussion, because the FOIA council's actually meeting Wednesday at 2:00, um, so the decision may happen before, at least the general assembly session, at least, the FOIA council's pretty influential. So I can circulate more information on what's being proposed, and I think what the amendment we'd like to see essentially is removing the two meeting a month lip, or two meeting per year limit that's in place, and that's in place for all boards, all public bodies, regardless of how frequent you meet. So if we meet once a week, for example, it's the same limit versus another board that may be meeting only once a month, um, and so it's pretty restrictive, and so everything that Debbie said, I think I support in terms of getting, um, participation easier and attract more people who might run for office and serve on boards otherwise. So thank you for raising it. I'll circulate something to Celeste, if you could send it to the rest of council, if we'd like to send the letter, or at least sign on to one that's being circulated as is. Um, if I could also make a suggestion on the schedule, Wyatt, in light of what we just talked about on SE changes, when do you think we could get that scheduled?
I think it was, uh, discussed, when, what Ms. Schaefer suggested was December 7th work session, and then, uh, December 14th referral out to boards and commissions.
Great, I think I'm fine with that. Um, and then, not schedule related, but doesn't really fit anywhere else, is Wyatt, can we talk about kind of the uptick in COVID cases in the region, and then the governor's, um, changes that he announced on Friday, and what we may be doing locally as well? We can do that maybe after all the scheduling stuff, before we go into closed.
Sure.
Okay, that's it for now.
Can I ask a couple of scheduling questions?
Of course, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. So Friday turns out not to be a good time for all the members of the Economic Development Committee meeting to meet, so we're considering, uh, combining the November and December meetings into one meeting on December the 11th, which I note on my calendar is Hanukkah. Uh, I don't know if that's a day that we try to avoid scheduling meetings on or not, um, but I just wanted to float that to Letty and to Ross, and to see if there is a time, if Friday, the 11th, is okay, uh, where we could meet, preferably not too early in the morning, but I understand that you all have, you know, things that you need to go on to, so, and I understand you also probably have no idea if your children are going to be in school then either, um, but, uh, for notice purposes, I think we can cancel the meeting of the EDC scheduled for Friday, and we'll try to get to the clerk with a new date, uh, tentatively December the 11th at, say, 9:00, um, if that is acceptable to Letty and Ross. Any thoughts, Letty and Ross?
Give me the date again, Phil.
Friday, December the 11th? I believe it's...
Oh, yeah, it's the same date we talked about over email, um, as long as it's in the morning.
Okay, well, is 9:00 okay, or 10:00?
Yes and yes.
Okay, let's do 10 to noon, if that's all right, if that works for Letty, she's got to ask around, I think. Okay. Um, I had, uh, one other que- oh, I just wanted to note that the Legal Women Voters hosted the mayor on Sunday, and he did fine program with them, with good questions and discussion, and, uh, also Vipas had its annual meeting, and I heard about the Duals Trail Program, Dual Trails Program, and they also had good, uh, discussion and questions and understanding of that, uh, pretty dramatic proposal, you know, when you see what they're doing, it's, it's very exciting. Um, I just wanted that, for the record, to be indicated. Uh, my only other question, and this is a, a quickie, uh, at the Housing Commission meeting last week, which I dialed into just to listen, there was some discussion, questions about whether there might be more, uh, units dedicated to affordability in the inside building, and, uh, the question was, well, what's the cost per unit to make, uh, uh, those units affordable? Uh, do we expect that, you know, we only have three meetings left this year after tonight, do we expect that that kind of information would come out, um, between now and before we quit for December, or is that something that would take us into January? This is a question for Wyatt, I suppose.
And, and, and which, I'm sorry, the...
Inside. If the, if the 6% of dedicated affordability at the inside building were to be a richer number, what, what is the cost of that? You know, what would it cost to take it up to 12 or 10 or... No, no specific numbers were mentioned at the Housing Commission meeting, that there was just general interest in whether we could have a number that's higher than six and what the price tag for that would be.
Okay, let me get back with you on that. That has not, now, you know, we do have the cash and lieu tool, which can work kind of the alternate direction of purchasing units, but this is a conversation we've not had with inside. And so we can do so and report back to the city council.
Okay.
Kind of how that conversation would go.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I, I do have one question, and that is, I'm looking at the November 23rd agenda. I don't see the staff holidays for 2021 on there. Is that going to be on there, Mr. Shields?
I would like it to be.
Okay.
It was discussed with GovOps, and so we would like to move that forward.
Okay. There were two items, right, related to personnel?
That's correct.
Okay. And they'll both be there. Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Other comments or questions?
And do we have the, as I look into December, do we have budget guidance on there anywhere?
We do for December 7th and then action on December 14th.
Okay. Great, thank you.
All right. Any other comments or schedule issues? Ms. Hardy, you wanted to discuss the governor's guidance or executive order issued on Friday, is that right?
Yes, and I think specifically if there's any local things we could do around communication, if Wyatt has updates on Falls Church specific actions.
Well, we certainly have been trying to communicate out the changes, you know, through all of our channels, and we'll do so with direct outreach to the business community as well, or have been and will continue to do so. And so I wasn't prepared tonight just to have a real detailed discussion of this. And, you know, I think just some of the highlights of the governor's new mandates is restricting the sale of alcohol to 10:00 and then the closing of, you know, in restaurants and bars, and the closing of restaurants and bars no later than midnight, and that's one of the key ones for the, for the, for our restaurant community. The other provisions, you know, is, you know, we, we've been working with the region. Part of the discussion today with the mayors and chairs call is how we've all had to scramble with this new information from the governor's office, and we're continuing to do that to get clarification on certain items. The bottom line is, however, that I think sort of the, the basic things that we've been doing are crucial and they're more important now than ever, and that is maintaining social distance, six feet or greater, avoiding any kinds of crowds, wearing a mask when you're out of the house in any public places, and staying home if you're ill, and washing your hands frequently. That is the, you know, in every call, in every discussion with health experts, that is the main thing. With respect to our Rec and Parks programs, as we go forward, we will make sure we have explicit sign-off from our, from our public health experts with Fairfax Health for our Rec and Parks programs. We have been trying to keep certain activities going so that kids can have exercise and that outlet, but we will, going forward, make sure, particularly with the changing situation with the increases in cases and the increases in, in sort of how this virus is now moving through our community, to change our plans and do them, you know, expressly with the direct guidance from the Health Department. So that's just a quick update, and at the next council, council's next meeting, we can give a kind of a better organized proposal on this, if that's the council's present preference.
So I could just add just a bit to that as well. So there was a regional call with the Secretary of Health today and also the five health directors from the Northern Virginia region, all of them were on the Zoom call today. And I think the governor's office intends to issue some clarification because there's some confusion about the meaning of those four items that Wyatt just mentioned, and so, you know, how they might apply to places of worship and, you know, does the 25 number apply to restaurants? And there's, there's just a bit of things that I think were left with confusion a lot of people's mind. There was concern also because the executive order came out on Friday afternoon and it was difficult for people to scramble and kind of fully understand it over the weekend. And as you, as you mentioned, I believe that the date of commencement of this changed also. So I believe there'll be additional clarification coming from the governor's office in the near future about the meaning of some of the four elements to the executive order. I would also say to your point about communication, and I know you communicated that over the weekend to some of us, and I think the point is well-taken, and I believe the region as a whole intends to have some outreach and communication as a region about this new executive order and just kind of the urgency to following these different guidelines. And so, at least regionally, that is on the agenda to try to come up with something in the very near future. I think there's a consensus about that. So I think that probably covers most everything, but Mary Beth, you were on that call, so I don't know if you have anything to add.
I think you got it, Mayor Charter. Thanks.
Okay, and then Mr. Snyder?
Sure. So thanks a lot. So let me add a couple other components, and I totally agree with everything that's been stated about the importance of social distancing and mask-wearing, et cetera. So I was pleased this morning where Moderna announced their vaccine is actually as safe as the Pfizer vaccine. And the good news there is that it doesn't need to be super cold the way the Pfizer vaccine requires, so it would be simpler to distribute. Second comment is, there's a lot of concern about people refusing to take the vaccine under the fear that the whole process has been rushed. Well, that's not really what's happened. The efficacy and safety studies have proceeded along very traditional proven grounds. What is speeded up, however, is the planning and actual acquisition of the vaccine and the distribution channels in place in advance of the safety and efficacy tests. And simply put, if the vaccine failed those tests, it would simply be destroyed. But if it passes those tests, it will be available to the public much more rapidly than had previously been the case. So there is a, a planning process that doesn't shortchange safety and efficacy, but actually moves forward the next phases very much more rapidly. And the third issue is, in addition to all the other issues that we're wrestling with regionally, is the distribution, the criteria, and how it's actually going to be done. So we had a report at the Council of Governments Board of Directors meeting last week on that, and stay tuned for further regional discussions and information on that. It's the light at the end of the tunnel, but unfortunately, we're still in the tunnel. So we need to keep doing everything that everyone has said, but I guess the good news is, we can actually start planning on distributing safe and effective vaccines so that at some point, certainly, we'll be much better off than we are today. So I wanted to pass all that on to, to folks, and it's, it's been an honor to participate in the vaccine trial for Moderna, and I'm really happy that they came out positively as they did. So, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Yes, thank you. I'm glad to hear all the regional coordination because clearly the virus knows no boundaries, so I'm glad that we're all at least using all the best practices and sharing. On that note, I think in this elected women's get-together we had yesterday, the virtual one, we talked about kind of a mask policy, because I think as a whole, we're recognizing that by now, everyone knows you're supposed to mask, social distance, wash your hands. That message is getting kind of stale, and frankly, I think over the summer, people let their guards down a bit. You know, people started having playdates and sleepovers and carpools and gatherings in the home, and I think the data now shows that's what's leading to the surge in cases across the US. So one, I do think the messaging needs to evolve a bit, but two, there's, I've gotten several concerns from parents about usage of masks and kind of inconsistency, because as it stands right now, the governor's only requiring people to wear masks in indoor settings, but I think there is benefit to actually using them in outdoor settings as well, especially if kids are in the playground and aren't doing a great job of social distancing. So I think the last thing any parent wants is to shut down the playgrounds again. So I think a good, I guess, health practice could be encouraging mask usage on playgrounds or other outdoor public settings and not just limiting to indoors. And so Carol, a question I have for you is whether we have authority to either provide such an ordinance or make it a strong recommendation on behalf of the city that on playgrounds and other outdoor public places, we encourage and want to see mask usage as well?
And I think certainly we can do the encouragement. I'm not, I, I do not believe, and I will verify after double-checking, that we have authority to pass an ordinance. The governor's directive states that his guidance on masks and requirements is to be enforced by the Virginia Department of Health, and it's not something that the localities have authority to enforce. I will double-check that and get back to everybody.
Yep, and I sent you the City of Alexandria one, because they did pass an ordinance, and I think their city attorney determined that they had authority through their charter for health reasons, but they did note that it has no teeth, so it's really, it doesn't have any financial or criminal penalty. So again, it's more of an encouragement, but it is an official ordinance they passed. So whether we go that route or whether we go a, hey, we really want you to wear a mask in any public setting, indoor or outdoor, especially if you can't distance, I think I'm fine with that approach, but I think as the, you know, weather gets colder and options are more limited for people to be, you know, inside or outside, I think we just need to be more careful with our mask usage. So if you can let us know what we can do. I think Wyatt is part of the discussion next week. I certainly would support either one of those approaches.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
I just got a text from Deborah telling me that the City of Falls Church Communications Department put out a really good description of the governor's new statewide restrictions at 6:49 tonight. So if you check your email for the COVID-19 update from the city, there is a very thorough description of how this impacts restaurants and bars, fitness and exercise, entertainment, recreation, sports, it's all right there. So thank you to the Communications Department for pulling all this together, because I'm sure that, that was a lot of work today.
All right, great.
Well, thank you for that plug. That was great.
Unless there's any other comments, why don't we move on to closed session? And once we go into closed session, we'll take a five-minute break and let the cameras come down and take a short breather, and then we'll come reconvene back in closed session. So unless there's anything else today, I'm going to go ahead and read a motion, and the time is now 9:14. Upon a motion made by council member...
Hardy.
Lichtenhouse.
Want to go with Hardy, seconded by council member...
Lichtenhouse.
...and passed by vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed by or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Council contract discussions regarding the comprehensive agreement for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project and discussions of possible changes to the Founder's Row project. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
No, I believe the public has the right to know. Thank you.
All right. Tarter, yes? All right. So the motion passes 6 to 1. It's 9:15. Let's take a five-minute, a five-minute break and reconvene, or it's 9:16. Let's take a five-minute break and reconvene at 9:21 in closed session.
Mayor, I wanted to let you know the TV is back on and you're ready to reconvene.
All right. Well, thank you so much. It looks like we are back in open session, and before we formally get back in open session, we are going to come out of closed session by motion. Upon a motion made by council member...
Duncan.
...and seconded by council member...
Connolly.
...and passed by vote of city council, council reconvene in open session. Vice...
Yes. Dave, you're off.
I'm off?
Oh, I lost you for a minute.
You were for a second.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yep.
Tarter, yep. All right, it is 10:59. This is our certification, upon a motion made by council member...
Duncan.
...and seconded by council member...
Connolly.
All right, I got Connolly. And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session. It was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Same.
Okay. Tarter, yep. All right. Is there anything else you want to talk about tonight?
Move to adjourn.
Let's do it. All right.